Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
President.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
President.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of May 22nd, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Journal's approved.
I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of consideration of the following additional items: Other Communications #7, 8, and 9, and Unfinished Business #4 and 5.
Second. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Rules are suspended. We'll turn to Page 10.
Communication #7, all districts.
Shall Bill #54 pass? The objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding.
Second. Roll call.
Council? Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
I'd like to make a brief comment again, as I've said in the past and will continue to say, I support the raises 100 percent. The matter in which the raises would take effect is which I am opposing because I believe that it can be done in another way. It's been presented here with separating the justice service workers can receive their raise through Prop P funding, and the nurses, I believe, who are currently paid through the Health Department can get paid through the Health Department, and then they will also get the raises. So I'm in favor of the raises. I just don't agree with the separating the Prop P money and moving Prop P money into the Health Department page, so that's, I vote no.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on the motion to pass Bill #54, the objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill #54 is finally passed.
Item #8, all districts.
Shall substitute Bill #2 for Bill #78, pass the objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
No.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on the question of shall substitute Bill #2 for Bill #78, pass the objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding, there are six ayes and one no.
Substitute Bill #2 for Bill #68, or substitute Bill #2 for Bill #78, is finally passed.
Item #9, all districts.
Shall Bill #84 pass? The objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Again, I'll make a brief explanation, which I've done at all the previous meetings. I just wanted to be clear. I'm voting no. Reason being is, I believe, we've had in the past administration, this administration, a county councilor's office, which is a full staff of lawyers who have done adequate performance of their duties, in my opinion, for our needs, and I think they will continue to, and they have always been professional. They've given remarks to a lot of legislation as requested of them. They wrote the legislation as requested and would give an opinion as to why they think maybe it shouldn't have been, or it might not go through, but they will write it the way you requested it. So I believe they're doing their job, and I don't see any need to replace them. And same with the prior bill on the, I agree with the finance reform 100 percent, but I believe that every one of our department heads and their staff are professionals and very competent in what they do and have the knowledge to run their departments, and for us to micromanage how they spend their money, and we approve their budget that they work under, and it's as strict budget as it is, and they adhere to that. So I believe we already have control of that budget, so I believe they should be able to do as they need to do. I'm not a professional in their departments, and they are, so I trust their judgment, and I don't think it's our place to micromanage it. So I am in favor of the campaign finance, but not the transfer of funds, so that's why I voted no on that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on the motion to pass Bill #54, the objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill #84 is finally passed.
Moving on to the unfinished business items. Item #4, all districts.
Shall substitute Bill #1 for Bill #76, pass the objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
No.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on the motion to pass substitute Bill #1 for Bill #76, the objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding, there are six ayes and one no.
Substitute Bill #1 for Bill #76 is finally passed.
Item #5, all districts.
Shall substitute Bill #1 for Bill #77, pass the objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
No.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on the motion to pass substitute Bill #1 for Bill #77, the objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding, there are six ayes and one no.
Substitute Bill #1 for Bill #77 is finally passed. We're going to make a brief statement. I'll allow the councilmembers to make a brief statement if they wish, and then we'll take a break while we prepare our charter amendments for the election board tonight. But I would like to say, in a recent interview, the county executive said that he couldn't get along with his council because he's such a strong leader, but his behavior in office has not been that of a leader. A true leader unifies people around a common vision based on shared values, but this county executive thrives on division. He's tried to divide this council, pitting councilmen against each other. He's tried to divide Democrats from Republicans, Democrats from other Democrats, Republicans from Republicans. He's pitted nurses against police officers, unions against other unions, and people, everyday people, against well-heeled campaign contributors. Sometimes it seems that Steve Steger can't get along with anyone except his campaign donors, and he certainly gets along well with them. This county executive came into office promising to clean up county government, but there's been more insider deals than ever before. Time after time, it seems, the only way to get a contract with this administration is to donate to the county executive's reelection campaign. And the Port Authority, his administration seems to be giving away taxpayer dollars to campaign contributors, like Oprah gives away cars. Every elected leadership's, every elected official's leadership is tested. In the last four years, we've tested this county executive, and he's failed. And we find ourselves here today because of failed leadership. Because of his repeated attacks on this council, we need our own lawyer. Because of his unfounded attacks on one councilman, we need to amend the charter. Because he appears to have exchanged taxpayer dollars for campaign contributions, we need campaign finance reform. And because he has selectively given raises to only county employees who support his political campaign, we have to override his veto just to give the nurses a raise. None of these votes would be necessary if we had a strong county executive who could line us up with a vision for St. Louis County, but these votes are necessary, and that's why I voted to override these vetoes today. Anybody else want to say anything before we break? Councilmember Wassinger?
I do, this is an unprecedented situation where we, number one, were sent down all these bills that were vetoed, so I find the situation that we are in quite unprecedented and unfortunate in many different ways. I do want to drill down a little bit into the technical aspects of the health fund proposal from the county executive. I know Councilman Dolan feels differently, but I feel very strongly that this particular fund cannot sustain the raises for the nurses. There are a number of reasons. In 2011, the health fund had $30 million in reserves. It now has 12. I think before we consider using health fund reserves to fund any county initiative, we need to know what the county executive's plan is to correct this deficit spending in the health fund to avoid any insolvency, which is quickly approaching. I think it's critical that those questions be answered, and I would actually request that we have a hearing on the health fund so we can drill down and see exactly what's going on. Aside from the raises alone, I think there are other insolvency issues there that need to be addressed sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Councilmember Trachis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope the people in this room today are listening to what's being said, and I hope the media reports it fully and accurately what's going on here. Where is the county executive? We have an absentee county executive once again. Once again, Mr. Stanger frankly is not on the job. He doesn't have the courage to be here today to defend his actions in vetoing critical legislation, whether it pertains to raises for nurses who work in the Justice Center or critical charter amendments that are desperately needed to make this county government run more efficiently. How many council meetings has this been the case? How many times is he never here? And when he is here, nine times out of 10, all he ever utters is nothing further, and then leaves immediately after a public forum. If he really wanted the job and wanted to do his job, he'd be here. I started by saying we have an absentee county executive. What is really the problem here is a total, complete, and utter absence of leadership. Make no mistake about him. And until we have that kind of leadership in place in the county executive position, nothing's going to change. That's all I have.
You have the comments. We'll take a five-minute break for the staff to prepare our charter amendments for the election board. We will reconvene at 10:20. Thank you. Okay, we'll get started. Please take a seat. We have no bid openings today, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises today, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item #1, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item #2, 6th District.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, Mr. Chair. Item #1, 1st District.
Please hold on order of business. I'm holding, let's see, 1, this one, number 1, 2, and 3, to check into our newly passed legislation, the minority inclusion, and make sure that this conforms with that, that we all voted for. So I'll have an answer by next week.
Items 1, 2, and 3 are held.
Item #4, 2nd and 6th Districts.
Hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Item #5, 3rd District.
Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item #6, 3rd, 5th, and 7th Districts.
Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item #7, 3rd and 7th Districts.
Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item #8, 6th District.
Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item #9, 3rd and 7th Districts.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair. Item #1, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, the Department of Planning, and to the county councilor.
So ordered.
Item #2, 5th District.
Receive and file. So ordered.
Item #3, all districts.
Receive and file, same motion for item #4, and that will be the order.
Item #5?
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item #6?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item #10?
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item #11?
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item #12?
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Any transfer appropriation of these funds? We need further council approval, and that will be the order.
Item #13?
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item #16. No, it's just item #14. I apologize. And that will be the order.
Item #15?
Hold on the order of business. Same motion for item #16, and that will be the order.
Item #17?
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item #18, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered.
Item #19, 4th District.
Hold on the order of business for further clarification.
So ordered.
Item #27, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the change orders be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Item #21, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item #22, 5th District.
Receive and file. So ordered.
Item #23, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as requested. Second.
Is your motion to approve this without a hearing, disappointment?
I think Jen had available any of the information, if anybody wanted it, on his resume. I have it here.
Do you know the status of the Board of Equalization operating that form?
I don't know what they are right now. I'm not sure, but he's very capable, you know, capable of filling the position, but if you want to have a hearing, that's fine. The information's available if you want.
Is your motion to approve this, or is your motion to hold it on the agenda?
Well, we can hold it on the agenda.
Okay, so ordered.
I'm sorry, was that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Hold on the, hold on the order of business.
Okay. No referral to committee?
No, we'll talk.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do think the Board of Equalization will be faced with a large number of appeals, so if we do need to have a hearing, I think we should go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Because we don't want to put them in a position where they are not able to do the work.
We'll do a little bit more investigation about the status of the Board of Equalization and direct our attention to it. Thank you.
And in your reason, I'm willing to hold it because, I mean, I understand if people want to check into it more, but the information is available on this gentleman, so.
Okay.
Item #24, 1st District.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Item #25, 1st District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Floridale Hills.
So ordered.
No add-ons this evening, Mr. Chair?
No report, county executive. No report. Public forum.
We have five speakers set here this morning, Mr. Chair.
Please come to the podium when your name is called. Give your name and address for the record, and please try and keep your comments to three minutes.
First speaker today is Azora Liggins.
Good morning. Azora Liggins, 53, 20 Bermuda. St. Louis, Missouri, 63121. Again, I come before this council trying to get information. I really would like to direct my question to my councilwoman, Hazel Erby. Back to our discussion that we had on last Tuesday when you left question regarding due process in the prosecuting attorney's office. That has been very disturbing for me because you left it open ending as if I'm not entitled to due process, and I wanted you to clarify that, and I want you also to clarify who does the prosecuting attorney report to because you just approved money for this office to get more money and their staff, and they're not being respectful to the citizens. We cannot get charges through, and I need to know who do these people report to because it's difficult to try to get issues resolved when the people that have to resolve the issues are disrespectful and not responsive. So my question to you is, maybe you can tell me, who do they report to? Who do we report them to? Why are we not entitled to due process in this particular office?
Ms. Liggins, I do think you're entitled to due process, but I have no jurisdiction over, none of us do, over the county, the prosecuting attorney's office. So I, he's accountable to the voters, as far as I see it, so if you don't, if you're not happy with him.
According to the jurisdiction that's out online under the justice and health, you're the chairman on that, correct? You're part of this.
Does justice and health have anything to do with the prosecuting attorney's office?
Yes, it's justice when they don't provide justice to the citizens. I think that's a, you don't see that as a problem. You don't, that doesn't fall under justice. It doesn't fall under health because it does create anxiety.
You're in front of the wrong person right now. You should be talking to the prosecuting attorney's office.
Ah, so who do he report to?
I have no idea.
So you, so this is the county, do you know Chairman Page who the prosecuting attorney reports to?
Prosecuting attorney is an independent elected office in the county.
Okay, so we just pay him, but he doesn't report to anybody. I'm confused.
Like all elected offices, ma'am?
Mm-hmm.
The ultimate recourse is to vote him out of office.
Okay, so until we get him out of office, do we get the due process, or we have to vote him out of office to get due process? Is that what I'm hearing here?
I think due process is a somewhat separate question. If you believe you've been denied due process by the county prosecutor, and I think the best recourse for you is to seek counsel, an attorney, to look at your situation, and if in fact due process has been deprived, there are legal avenues that would be available to you, but this council is not in a position to pursue any of that on your behalf.
Okay, so there is no protection for me in the county when I'm being violated by criminals?
They didn't say that. The Constitution of the state of Missouri, as well as the United States, provides you ample protection under the 4th, 5th, and 14th Amendments, but that's legal arguments. That would require legal counsel. So I would encourage you just to seek that anyway if you believe that you have in fact been denied due process by the county executive.
I appreciate that one-ending question.
Yes.
So if I'm.
Can you wrap up, Azora?
Sure, I can. If I'm feeling that I'm being a victim here, and I am a victim here, where do I go get protection? Am I being protected in this county? Because right now I'm not feeling any protection, and people are stealing from me. So I just need some direction. Since you guys can't protect us, where do we go get protection from?
Well, Azora, I looked at the court order that concluded your case, and it appears to me, when I read that order, that one avenue for you is to have legal counsel look at that and try and reopen your case.
A court order? What court order was that?
Well, I can provide you with another copy of it if you don't have it. I don't have it with me at the dais, but my office can give you another copy of it.
Oh, okay. Well, I really would appreciate that because I see that this is an ongoing problem, and we can't bridge the divide when only certain people are extended rights. And right now, we know that St. Louis County has a serious problem with bias, and we can't deny that, any of us. And we can't fix it if we continue to turn our head to it. We can't fix it if we can't get access to the offices that are charged to fix it.
We'll give you a copy of that order, and you can take a look at it, and we can talk again.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
I would like to, I called, I tried to speak with the assistant to Bob McCullough, and I asked him for certain documents as to why he came up with his conclusion, and he said he doesn't, does not have them, or he's not giving them to me, but I don't think he has them. So my point being, I even was not able to get information that I needed from his office. And I take issue as well with us increasing the pay for assistant prosecutors, and we don't get any assistance as council members. So I do have to say that I take issue with that, but the case is a little bit different, separate from what actually what she's talking about, but that's something to discuss later.
Okay. Next speaker's Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, a recent article told of the destruction of University City neighborhood is titled "Death by TIF: Another African-American Neighborhood Faces Extinction." This has to do with the big proposed development around Olive and 170. 67 homes, 58 apartments, two churches, and buildings containing dozens of businesses would be bulldozed so a Costco, among other things, can be built on the site. It has drawn a lot of criticism. "It would completely destroy the character of the neighborhood," said one citizen. "It is categorically stupid," said another. The entire project would cost nearly $200 million, and the developer wants $70 million from a TIF. It will require approval of a 12-person University City TIF commission. What's interesting is who's on the commission. Half are in St. Louis County government, and three of those work for our county executive's office, Glenn Powers, Tom Curran, and Tom Elcheck. Of course, they will support the TIF. Just about everyone believes a fix is in with the TIF commission and has been for some time. This will mean the death of a neighborhood, a lot of people being kicked out of their homes, and many minority businesses being kicked out of their buildings, all with the support of the county executive's people. This comes on top of the Jamestown Mall announcement. The county executive insisted the Port Authority control the redevelopment of the shopping center, meaning he would control it. And what did he come up with for the site? Warehouses. If he couldn't do any better than that, he should have left it alone. What's needed is a retail center with the right mix. Overland Plaza would be the model to follow. It was once a mall but was successfully redeveloped into a shopping center that serves the nearby area quite well. The situations in University City and with Jamestown Mall provide further evidence that St. Louis County needs a change in leadership. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next speaker's Kira Braxton.
Morning. Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Kira Braxton. I reside at 19 Conley Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63135. Kind of disappointed that the county executive is not here. This is the one place that the 55 Justice Services employees can usually have you all on the same forum where we can get answers without getting various answers to some of our questions. We appreciate you all passing. We appreciate you all passing Bill 54, but we're concerned and we're wondering what the next step is because we know that there's some pushback from the county executive as far as a portion of that bill. So most of us are here, a lot of us, and we just kind of want answers as to when we could see this benefit us on our paycheck. So far this year, we've yet to receive $91,604 of the Prop P money that you all agree on. For me, that's putting my children in summer camp. That's how that affects my household, so that's finding another way to put my children in summer camp. Some of us, like I said before in previous meetings, are at the poverty level, so it's a lot of money for us. It makes a huge difference for us. For some of us, that may just cover our house note, our mortgages. For some of us, car note, insurance. For some of us, buying homes. We're just really looking forward to reaping the benefits. I personally, I, I believe, I'm speaking for all of us, really appreciate the dedication, the commitment, the hard work that all of you all have put into this, even those that agree or disagree, but that you all have come together. It concerns me when I think about the legislative branch and the executive branch because you all are, you know, elected by the voters. You all are our voices from our different communities, and you all have come to a majority agreement. And generally, in my mind, that means that this is, this is good to go. I understand that this has been a long process, and I, and most of us, understand that it will be a little lengthier than what we would like, but we would like to know what to expect moving forward with Bill 54. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Burton.
Good morning, all. Good to see you all again. Michael Burton, 8032 Pembroke, 63123. Just want to add something. Done some more research on the proposal at Tower T and retention ponds. Retention ponds were in the last proposal, and it's something that is more than likely going to be in this next proposal, and they're going to be in the back of New Hampshire, and there's been multiple incidences of children drowning in retention ponds. So just tack that on the long list of things why this is a bad idea. I am very disappointed to see, not see the county executive here, and I also just want to thank the majority of you for working together so much. I mean, what, there was like five, six-to-one votes today, you know, Republicans and Democrats working together, and I just want to say I really appreciate that. Thank you, all.
Final speaker this morning is Mary Hastings.
Chairman and councilpeople, I'm Dr. Mary Vaderott Hastings, and I reside at 977 Cabernet Drive in Town and Country, 63017. And this is my first time here. I've never spoken, but I do this on behalf of the nurses that I work with. And I'm here because I have been a physician for over 30 years. I've had seven different jobs in three different cities. So I have worked with, and that doesn't even include my periods of schooling and training. So I've worked with a variety of nurses in all different settings all across the state. The nurses here have a completely different job description than any other nurses I've ever worked with. What this includes very much is what I would consider public safety. They are called on the first line. If you were to walk through a tour of the jail, which I have given many times, they are the very first person that somebody sees when they are brought in by the police department. People are drunk, they may have substances of abuse on them, they are combative, they are mentally ill. Our nurses are called upon to do triage in a way that nobody else is. They are also there 24/7. Physicians, secretaries, anybody else are not there in the evenings or weekends, and our nurses are covering that. They're called to be EMS, they're called to be first responders, they're Narcaning people who overdose in our intake while they're waiting. They are called upon to help people get to a level of safety. When an officer brings an inmate in to be arrested, they are not allowed to come into the county health, into the jail until a nurse evaluates them and sees if they're fit. Then they call me, but I rely upon the or, the evaluation of my nurses. Also, they are the only personnel in the county health department of the employees, nurses, who work evenings and weekends. They are required to work evenings and weekends. I have also, in my 10 years I've been in this position, worked in the other county health departments. I was on faculty, I was on staff at the St. Louis County Health Department. My appointment is through St. Louis University. I'm a physician in the Department of Family Medicine, and I'm subcontracted out to the health department. So I needed to work at the South County Health Department for about five years. The nurses there, it's a completely different job description. And what happens is the health department is strapped for money. So we are being called upon to help lower the costs of providing healthcare throughout the St. Louis County to all St. Louis County residents, but specifically in the jail, we have really worked hard to bring our costs down. We've instituted formularies, we've instituted all of these protocols, which call upon more and more judgment upon our nurses.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Thanks.
Am I able to go?
You can conclude your conversation.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, is that I advocate that whatever is supportive, I'm losing nurses to other jobs. Over the 10 years I've been here, I've lost some of my best nurses, and you can't bring on brand-new nurses to this job. It's a completely different type of position that that's required. The learning curve is very high to learn how things work. So if we do not finance these nurses better, we will continue to lose them. They're now working 16, 18-hour shifts. They're working more than they need to. We're short-staffed, and that will put everybody at jeopardy. And I propose that without enough nurses, you won't have a St. Louis County jail.
Mr. Chair, may I inquire of Dr. Hastings? Dr. Hastings, thank you for coming today. I just have a question. Do you supervise the nurses at the correction center currently?
Yes, I'm the medical director, and there are, I share the position as the medical director. There's another physician who works a day and a half a week. I'm the remainder of the time. And then there's a physician assistant and a nurse practitioner, all of which work under me.
And is your office located in the correction center?
Yes. So the third floor of the correction center is the clinic. We also cover the infirmary, and then we also cover the juvenile detention center. Our nurses go over to the juvenile detention center for any emergencies and to dispense medications. The difficulty is we have a lot of diabetics, and it's very hard to regulate them, so they're running back and forth to the juvenile detention center to take care of the diabetics on top of their other responsibilities. So in the middle of the night, they may have to leave their infirmary patients and run over.
So my question is, if, as a means to resolve this disagreement with respect to the nurses, and whether or not they should be paid out of Prop P, if they were redesignated as correction employees, would you still be able to supervise them?
Yes.
And would, would that pose any difficulty to you as a supervisor of those nurses at all, just a mere change in designation?
So my contract is, is the contract between St. Louis University and St. Louis County Health Department, and they pay St. Louis University for my services, which is to, to be the director or a physician at the St. Louis County Health Department, providing services in terms of the clinic and the infirmary and administrative. So I don't think that job description changes. It doesn't designate that it's over nurses. The specific collaborative agreements I have are with the county employment, employees, the nurse practitioner, and the physician assistant. So I don't think it changes my job.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, then regardless of what title they're given or what department they're, under, under whose offices they're under, you'd still be able to supervise them?
Well, of course, because my position is to take medical care of the inmates. So I see them, but they're my first line of defense, literally.
Thank you, Dr. Hastings.
Is there any other questions?
Any questions? Councilman Harder.
Mr. Chairman, we were told, I think, early on in this debate months ago, that that designation could not be done because of supervision, and now we're hearing that it could be done. That could really resolve this issue for once and for all, if that's possible. So we're not getting all the right answers here, I think.
Would you like to look at my contract?
Sure.
Okay. So I have a copy of my contract, which is the St. Louis University contract with, well, it's my contract with St. Louis University, and then I guess we, I could get a copy of the St. Louis University contract that is with the county health department, and that would be through the county health department director, Dr. Emily Duchette, and then the chairman of the St. Louis, St. Louis University Family Medicine, and that would be Dr. Chris Jacobs.
So you're saying that if, if these, how many nurses do you supervise?
Sixty.
Four.
Well, we're, we're grossly understaffed. We should run around 60, and I think we're at 40.
Okay. So if, of those 40, you have direct supervision, so if, if we make them jail employees of the Justice Center, would you still be able to supervise them from a medical standpoint?
So I am hired, like I said, I'm hired by the county health department, by St. Louis University contracted out, so I'm imagining that that would cover anything that the health department is within their responsibilities, and if that includes service to the jail.
And you report to whom?
My direct supervisor is the chairman of the Family Medicine Department at St. Louis University, Dr. Chris Jacobs.
Okay, so you're like a contract worker?
Correct.
For the health department?
The two physicians, myself and, and, and Dr. Jen Bello, she's currently on maternity leave, but we are contracted, as is the psychiatric care is contracted from St. Louis University. So four physicians are contracted, and everybody else is county health employees.
I see Dr. Khan is here.
He wants to say.
I'd like to acknowledge him, if you could.
Sure. Come on up, Dr. Khan. Just wanted to clarify this before it becomes myth. Contractors do not supervise county employees.
Okay.
The supervi, supervisory chain for the Corrections Medicine Program has nurse managers that supervise nurses, and a program manager who is also a nurse that supervises the program. Dr. Hastings and other colleagues that work under contract with us provide professional supervision in terms of the clinical care provided to inmates, and provide professional advice as needed. However, the formal administrative supervisory chain is restricted to county employees per county rules. I also wanted to clarify for Mr. Tracus's benefit, the fact that switching the Corrections Medicine Program over to public safety or corrections or justice services was a question that I asked of the county counselor and was explained to me in very clear detail at the time, I think this was at the Committee of the Hall meeting as well, that there is a charter restriction that prohibits such a transfer from occurring. So that question was asked and answered in clear detail.
So, Dr. Khan, it's, it's your position anyway that we're precluded from redesignating these nurses as correction services employees?
That is correct, sir.
Would it also be your opinion, or let me ask it this way, to your knowledge, is there any prohibition that you can think of that would stop the Department of Corrections from contracting with St. Louis University for Dr. Hastings services to supervise nurses designated in the correction services department if that were to happen?
Such an arrangement would create a convoluted mess in terms of contract management and overall setup. I don't see the need for any such arrangement. The arrangement that we currently have through the Department of Public Health with, with St. Louis University is the ideal fit for that program.
So is there anything in your current arrangement that would preclude Dr. Hastings from supervising from a professional standpoint, a medical, professional standpoint? I don't care about HR.
She already does.
Well, let me finish, please. From Dr. Hastings supervising those nurses if in fact they were to be redesignated as corrections employees?
That's not for me to comment on, sir.
So you have no opinion on that?
No, sir. You can ask the county counselor's office. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Khan, do you, do you know how the charter concerns were navigated 20 years ago? Are the nurses were, were a part of the corrections department?
That is, the way it was explained to me, I'll defer to Peter and Assistant County Counselor, make me walk.
We'll follow up. I think there's a lot of questions we need to develop on this, and we'll schedule another hearing and have another opportunity to talk about it.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hastings.
Thank you. Introduction bills?
Bill number 112, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, pending ordinance number 26,769, by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services in support of the violent death and enhanced opioid surveillance program. Bill number 113, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $920,127 to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, appropriating the same for housing in support of services, authorizing the county executive to execute necessary contracts. Bill number 114, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $70,000 from the Office of National Drug Control Policy, appropriating the same for support of a detective assigned to the multi-jurisdictional drug task force, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 115, introduced by Councilmember Harder and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Lane Echo Construction Services, LLC, for interior modification of a county-owned building at Spirit of St. Louis Airport. Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Wasinger, and Page, and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with H.R. Green Incorporated for professional engineering services related to the Bayless Avenue resurfacing project, the Ballast Road resurfacing project, and the Dealman Road ARS infrastructure project, and authorizing the Director of Transportation to execute necessary documents for revision of work activity schedules AR-1693, 1683, and 1554. Bill number 117, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a utility agreement with Missouri American Water Company for the relocation and adjustment of utility facilities in connection with the improvement of Music Avenue at Grabway Road, CR1544. Bill number 118, introduced by Councilmembers Page and Harder and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Horner and Schifrin Incorporated for engineering services in connection with resurfacing James S. McDonnell Boulevard and Baxter Road, and authorizing the Director of Transportation to execute necessary documents necessary for revision of work activity schedules AR, AR-15, 52, and 1555. Bill number 119, introduced by Councilmember Dolan and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Engineering Design Source Incorporated for consulting engineering services in connection with improvement of the Berry Road, Big Ben Road intersection, and authorizing the Director of Transportation to execute necessary documents for revision of work activity schedules AR-1724. Bill number 120, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, pending ordinance number 26,160, by repealing and reenacting Section 2 pertaining to a contract with the Missouri Department of Social Services State Technical Assistance Team for the provision of child autopsies and related services by the St. Louis County Medical Examiner and to appropriation of funds received. Bill number 121, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute contract and one renewal with the Salvation Army for operation of a cooling shelter at 10,740 Page Avenue. Bill number 122, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray and ordinance, authorizing the St. Louis County Executive to grant Spire STL Pipeline LLC an easement for installation and maintenance of a 24-inch Diana Natural Gas Transmission Pipeline in Fort Belafontaine Park. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Correction.
Bill number 44, introduced by Councilmember, by Councilmember Page.
Drop from the order of business, and that will be the order, and we'll revisit this at some point when we're able to take a broader look at these.
Bill number 91, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Drop from the order of business, and that will be the order.
Bill number 99, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Mr. Chair, it's no secret I desperately want to move this bill to perfection today. I'm on record, these police stations are sorely needed. There's no doubt about that, and this is in no way backing off of that position. However, some members of this council have expressed concerns with respect to information that they want to acquire from the Port Authority regarding the due diligence involved in this. In deference to those colleagues, I'm going to hold this bill for the short term, to allow you time to inquire further with respect to the questions you have. But I do want to state that this needs to move forward in an expeditious way, your inquiries, so that we can finally pass this bill. So for now, I ask to hold it on the order of business.
Bill number 99 is held on the order of business.
Bill number 100, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number 100.
Second.
Hold in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 100 is perfected.
Bill number 105, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Hold on the order of business, we need to work on sections five, six and seven of this bill, and that will be the order.
Bill number 106, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 106, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 106 is perfected.
Bill number 107, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 107, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 107 is perfected.
Bill number 108, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 108.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 108 is perfected.
Bill number 109, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill 109, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 109 is perfected.
Bill number 110, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember Walton Gray.
Move to, to perfect bill number 110.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number 110 is perfected.
Bill number 111, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move to perfect bill number 111.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We haven't really had much information, is there a committee meeting for this, or?
I hadn't asked for one, we can have one if you'd like.
Would you mind?
It basically, for any board and commission positions that do not require approval by the county council, it adds that. And it also amends our sunshine law to mandate that all boards and commissions put on their, on the, on our website, their agenda, their meeting minutes, and so that's all public record and easily available to the general public. And their meeting minutes, if I didn't say that.
Well, maybe I can meet with you. I'll abstain for now because I don't, I haven't really, I haven't had any information about this, so.
Well, there was, there was a memo on the agenda, but I'm happy to talk to you about it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions?
Abstain.
So, noted, Dr., or noted, the bill is perfected, we'll talk more about it, and Councilman Dolan has abstained. Final passage.
Bill number 305, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Before we move to final passage, I want to revisit bill 99 for a minute.
Yes.
I think it's important for the public to understand that this bill would authorize the expense of $1.4 million for design of these stations. Now, in effect, what that means is that we're going to ultimately approve whatever's designed, because we're not going to back away from $1.4 million already invested. And so, based on that, and based on concerns raised by some council members with respect to a need for additional information, before I can in good conscience move this along and require the county to spend $1.4 million of taxpayer money, I want to make sure that this body is, is satisfied with respect to any questions it has. So I'm agreeing to hold it for a short term, but I do want to reiterate, if it wasn't for the $1.4 million expense, I would have moved this bill tonight. But because of that, I'm willing to hold it for a short period so that you can obtain the information you're seeking. But I would encourage you again to act expeditiously, because these, these stations need to be built.
Thank you, it's all right. Thank you. Final passage.
Bill number 305, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I, I move to hold bill, bill number 305.
305 is held.
Bill number 353, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Moved, hold bill, bill 353 and 354 is held.
Bill number 102, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 102, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 102 is finally passed.
Bill number 103, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for final passage of bill number 103.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 103, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 103 is finally passed.
Bill number 104, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number 104.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, bill number 104, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 104 is finally passed. Resolutions?
We have one resolution this evening, Mr., or, this morning, I keep forgetting. Introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Do we have unfinished business, Mr. Chair? Item number one, Third District.
Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number two, Fourth District.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number three, First District.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number six, First District.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
And under new business, we have two prepared orders today, Mr. Chair.
Can I make a, can I say something before that, real quick?
Yes.
Just nothing. I want to know if I could be added on your resolution, if I could be added to your resolution.
Oh, yes, sure.
Gee.
Okay. It was already provided to the family, but yesterday, in the official copy, we can add you one.
I move for adoption, of, no, I move to, to adopt, or, I forgot.
Order number one.
Order number one.
All in favor of adoption, or second, all in favor of adoption, order number one? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Order number one is adopted.
And please hold on order number two.
Order number two is held. Any other comments of any councilmembers?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Councilman, or, Councilman Erby, was that acceptable to you to change the sponsorship on that?
Sure. I asked. Thank you. We were, I guess you were looking at something. I asked her, I peed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wassinger?
Yes, I want, I would like our Councilmember Erby to talk about the Homeless Connect program that occurred last Thursday. It was very well-attended, very well-received, I thought. You did a good deed there, and I hope that continues on an annual basis.
Thank you. We had over, probably approximately 200, somewhere between 150, 200 participants. We provided on-the-spot housing, medical, what do you call it?
Services?
Services, yes, like HIV testing, blood pressure screenings, and all those things, and, and I think over 45 agencies participated. The interesting thing was that we had haircuts, which was one of the most popular. We did about 65 haircuts. There were people requesting showers, however, the people who were going to do the showers came in at the last minute, and so we didn't have the water hookup. But it was interesting that, that was held on Thursday, when Jackie came into the office on Friday, please forgive my, I sound like Froggy or something, I'm sorry. But anyway, when Jackie came into the office on Friday, we had 16 calls of people who were just trying to get there, wanting services for that day. So, we, we dropped the ball on that end, we didn't think about, I guess, having someone to, to man the phone or whatever, but they needed transportation. We had churches who provided transportation, Metro provided transportation, even, we even had people come over from the, from Kathy Wyman Center, somebody brought a group of the women over for services. At the end of the day, we had an exit interview where they told us what the services are that they need the most, kind of a survey, so that we know, you know, next time. And they received hygiene packs as they left, that had all kinds of items. We had so many contributors, and I can't name all of them, but if you go on our, our Facebook page, Project Homeless Connect, you can see some of our early supporters were Maxine Clark, and of course, the university contributed as well, because one of the most expensive parts of the day was providing hot lunches for all of the people who attended. And UMSO met us halfway with the cost. So Chancellor George and, and all of the staff over at UMSO, it was awesome. And thank you, Councilwoman Wassinger, for your contribution in attending as well as to help us with some of the things that we needed, so. It was, it was awesome.
I think, well, I think it turned out really, and it's a really good thing for the, the people who live in the county that are homeless, and I know other jurisdictions do, do it on an annual basis, so I hope that our, I know AJ was there, and hopefully that will be a county program.
A county program.
An annual county program, that.
I checked online, and in San Francisco, they have, they have it regularly and have incorporated as a business, as a, they have office hours daily, so we have a Department of, what is it, Homeless Outreach, so maybe that's something that they can put in place where we can deal with the homeless community on a daily basis for their needs. It was outstanding, and, and the, the comments from the participants who received the services was just, was, was awesome. Thanks again, thanks to everybody who participated, and Department of Human Services, they all showed up, everybody was there, so it was great. It's good.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.